Good evening.
Good evening.
Inkster City Council Meeting, Monday, December 4, 2023 is now called to order. We're pleased. If anybody who wouldn't lead us in prayer. Pastor Bradford, come on.
Usually, we ask people when we go before God in prayer to close your eyes and bow your heads, but I'm going to ask everybody to keep their eyes open with anticipation of seeing something tonight. Father, we thank you for all the things that you've done, for the things that you are doing in our lives. We ask you, Lord Godfathers, we anticipate this meeting tonight, that you, Father, overpower and overtake our leaders. Father, give them the ability to deliberate as they would do according to you being in the room. We ask you, Lord Godfather, to bless each and every home that's gathered together. We ask you, Father, to empower. We ask you, Father, to give us enrichment. It's in your name that we pray, in Jesus' name. Everybody say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Rutledge.
Present.
Councilmember Bishop.
Present.
Councilmember Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
And Mayor Potem Chisholm.
Present.
And for the record, Mayor Nolan.
Present.
You have a quorum?
All right, yes, great. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda. I don't think we had, we did forget to discuss one thing in closed session, but we do have that as item 14. So if we approve the agenda, we can go back into closed session. Do anything else we need to add to the agenda? Take off? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some will. Second.
We're probably moving to second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The passers. Presentations. Okay. DPS Jerome Bivens, are you ready? This better be entertaining to, this better be good. You ready? Come on up.
Good evening, mayor, council, viewing audience and audience here. My name is Maya Roots. I'm the Special Project Manager for the Department of Public Services. I am a born and raised Inkster resident, and I have been working for the city of Inkster for 11 years, and I have been in this position for two years. I take pride in my city, so with this position, I'm glad I can be the middle person between contractors and for our residents. So today, we're going to have a presentation with me along with our engineers, Daniel and Carrie from Benish. So today, we're going to talk about improving our community, describe the projects that are going on in our future projects, want to acknowledge the inconveniences that happen during construction, and this is for communication updates for our residents and for our council. So today, Daniel and Carrie will talk about our recently completed projects, our almost completed projects, our currently under construction projects, and our plan for next two years, along with programs seeking funding that we're looking for for the future. So right now, we'll have Daniel come up to talk about our recently completed and almost completed projects.
Thanks, Maya. My name's Dan. I'm an engineer with Benish. Been there for 12 years now and been servicing Inkster for about seven years, I think. So the first project I'm going to talk about is our Avondale Phase 1. So this project is a road reconstruction that went from Henry Ruff to Eastern Avenue. This project included all new water main and lead service replacements. It included new sanitary sewer and rehabilitation. We also constructed a brand-new separated storm sewer. This project was open to traffic in December of 2022, and it was all-new concrete roadway. So this project has been completed. It cost about $7.1 million. That was paid for with the gas tax and a $550,000 grant was for the water main. One thing to mention with this project was this was designed in 2020 and constructed or left for construction early '22. So one thing we were hit with was unexpected inflation, so this project was about 30% higher than what we had initially thought, which kind of had a snowball effect on other projects. So our next project is our Avondale Phase 2 water main replacement. So when we say Phase 2, that's originally Avondale was going to be three phases, so Phase 2 is from the end, which is near Eastern Avenue, and extends east of Inkster Road, which is almost to Sherborne. For this project, we were able to obtain loans for just the water main replacement, so we replaced the substandard water main that was there. We also replaced any lead services that were on this water main. This project is nearly complete. We've got the restoration wrapping up this month, and this project cost about $2.5 million, and it was paid for with drinking water state revolving fund loans. So our next project that's actively under construction is what we're calling our Northwest Quadrant Roads Project. So this project is on Northwood Street from Avondale down to Inkster Road, from Center from Avondale down to Northwood, and on Eastwood from Avondale down to Northwood. So on this project, it's a total reconstruction, so all new water main, we're constructing all new separated storm sewers, we're also doing sanitary sewer rehabilitations through there. We're going to have a completely reconstructed asphalt roadway. Construction for this began back in July, and the, we're hoping to finish up the paving on Northwood and Center this month, weather permitting. Otherwise, we'll be completing Eastwood next spring, should be completed by June. This project cost about $4.5 million and was paid for with the gas tax funds and water sewer fees. Again, this project was also impacted by the inflation, so this had some snowball effects as well. So our next project is our, that has been completed, is the Avondale Phase 2 asphalt overlay. So that area of Avondale was in pretty rough shape, so as a temporary fix, and due to the inflation, we went ahead and paved a new asphalt roadway there. This went from Eastern to Colonial, and again, it's a new hot-mix asphalt overlay, and again, this is temporary until the road can be fully reconstructed. This was completed in November, it cost roughly $200,000, and was paid for with gas tax funds. The next project that's actively under construction is our Eastern Outfall CSO elimination project. So this project, you can see the streets here on the map, it's on Yale Street from Meadowdale to Princess, from, on Notre Dame from Meadowdale to Princess, and also on John Daly from Norfolk down to Kitch. So on this project, we are working, it's the first of four phases, and this project primarily consists of constructing a brand-new storm sewer, a 60-inch to be exact. This construction began back in April, and we've got, Notre Dame Street has been paved, and they're actively working on Yale Street for that. John Daly, south of Notre Dame, has been paved, and that storm sewer has been completed. There's a bit of concrete still to go at some of the intersections there, but they're working on getting that completed. So this project cost about $10.4 million, and this was paid for with Clean Water State Revolving Fund loans and water and sewer fees for the rehabilitation of sanitary sewers. So the next project that we have that's almost complete is our North River Park Water Main Project. This project was a brand-new water main constructed between Avondale and Blackstone on North River Park Drive. This project, we replaced about 3,000 feet of substandard water main along with 32 lead services. The water main and lead services, that is completed, with road rehabilitation to be scheduled this month, so we're looking to get that road rehab this year. This project cost about $1.5 million and was paid for with Clean, with Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loans. The next project that we have, very similar to the North River Park Drive, is our, what we're calling our Section 17 Water Main. So this is actually near Middlebelt and Beach Street. It's specifically on Manning Drive, Luddington Street, and Kiwadan Street, and also Beach Street. Here, we replaced all the water main here, there was substandard water main there as well, along with about 20 lead services were replaced with it. The water main installation is completed, but we're working on a road rehabilitation that's due actually in December here. This project cost about $1.5 million and was paid for with Drinking Water State Revolving Fund loans. So the next project that is completed for this year is our Lead Service Replacement Program. So let's see, we're on phase, year four of our 14 years of replacing all of the lead services in Inkster. This year, we replaced 67 services, and we also had 67 services the last three years. This is various locations through the city. You know, each year, we try to pick the areas that are most dense of lead services and get as many as we can replaced. This year was near Notre Dame, Beach Daly, Yale Street, Bayhand area. This project cost about $700,000 this year, and that was paid for with water and sewer fees. The next project that was completed this year is our Lead Service Investigations. So this project is required by the state of Michigan to validate the city records of if a service is lead or if it's copper or maybe something else. They do this by hydroexcavating, so they take a vector and vacuum out the dirt and examine what's there. This occurs in various locations throughout the city. It was completed back in August. It cost roughly $350,000 and was paid for with water and sewer fees. The next project that the construction's almost completed on is our Sidewalk Replacement Program Phase 1. So Phase 1 is also our Section 1, which is bound by Cherry Hill to the north, Henry Ruff to the west, Avondale to the south, and Middlebelt Road to the east. This project consisted of replacing sidewalks that were out of compliance with the city's code of ordnances, and it also included new upgrades to handicap ramps in that area. Sidewalk replacements are mostly complete, and the remaining is anticipated to be completed in spring of 2024. This project cost roughly $1.1 million and was paid for with grants and gas tax fund. The next project that we've got is a water system leak survey and water audit. The leak survey's been completed this year, and the audit is planned for later this year into the winter. So this occurs throughout the entire city. This is where our field staff will actually listen to fire hydrants and water valves, and they can actually hear if there's water leaking into places it's not supposed to go. They use special leak detection equipment, so that's why they've got the headphones there in the picture. Then the water audit will actually help determine the water purchased from Gleewa and the water sold to the city's residents. This task costs about $75,000 and is paid for with the water and sewer fees. So our next task that we have is the hydrant flowing and winterization. So every year, we go through the city and we make sure that if there's any water in a fire hydrant, we make sure to pump it down and get it out of there. If that water is left in there, there's a possibility it could freeze and damage those fire hydrants. So we're also going to be flowing and checking operability in a quarter of the city. This year, we're going to be flowing in the northeast quadrant of the city, so east of Inkster Road and north of Michigan Avenue, and making sure that those hydrants work or don't work. And then, like I mentioned, we pump out all of the water and all of the hydrants every year. So this started in November, we're going to be wrapping it up here in December. It's costing roughly $65,000 and paid for with water and sewer fees. Our next task that's ongoing is the valve exercising program. So there's approximately, well, 900 valves throughout the city. This began in March and will continue through the winter. This is where we actually go out and turn every single valve and make sure it works or doesn't work. If it doesn't work, we make sure to note it, and we're going to schedule it for replacement. This project costs roughly $260,000 and is paid for with water and sewer fees. Then our next project that's ongoing is hydrant replacements. So we've already replaced about 30 hydrants this year, and in that process, we realized that a lot of the water valves weren't working properly. You need the water valves to be able to turn out the water, to be able to cut out and replace the fire hydrant. So our next round of fire hydrant replacements will be in coordination with valve replacements. So once we get some nice new valves in that work, we'll make sure we're replacing hydrants in that area so we can really become more efficient at what we're replacing. So this was, the equipment was paid for through grants, the labor was paid for with water and sewer fees, and we anticipate it'll cost about $750,000. The next project that's completed is the speed bump installation. So there were 16 locations throughout the city that were recommended by the police, and they've been installed. So about $16,000 was the cost for document preparation, procurement, and inspection, about $75,000 to get these speed bumps installed. And the installation was actually paid for primarily with a grant, so we received $60,000 in a grant for this, with matching funds provided by the city. So those matching funds were also included, the document preparation, procurement, inspection, and the inspection was paid for with gas tax funds. So the construction was about $60,000, but the city had to match $15,000 for the design and construction services, along with $15,000 in matching funds to obtain the $60,000 grant. The next one that we have is our pavement asset management. So this is where we go through the city and assess all of the pavement throughout the city. We evaluate and document that condition every three years, and this is required to obtain gas tax funding, which helps fund the roads. The fieldwork was completed this summer, and the update to the asset management plan that gets turned into the state is due by January. This tax cost, or I'm sorry, this cost roughly $30,000 and was paid for with the gas tax fund. So that's all the projects that we've been doing this year and have finished and are actively working on, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to Carrie here, and she's going to talk about our upcoming projects and future.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you, and all in the audience, thank you for having me here tonight. I am going to talk about upcoming projects, projects that are planned, oh, did you get closer? Is that better? Okay. Projects that are planned and projects that we're seeking, that are funded, and projects that we're seeking funded for, funding for. So I'm going to start with our water main projects. This project is referred to as Section 5 Water Main, and it's basically in Avondale Avenue, which is referred to as Phase 3 of Avondale Avenue, which picks up from Sherborne and then ends at Beach Daly at the city limits. In addition to that water main replacement, we'll also be replacing smaller sections south of Avondale Avenue and all of the lead services that are located in there. So this is currently being designed, and the city was able to obtain a grant to complete this work for approximately $4.9 million. The Section 22 Water Main Replacement, I see this area on your agenda tonight, is replacing some substandard water mains. It'll be bid with the Section 5 project that you just looked at, it's also in design, Duran Court, Crystal Court, and Wayland Court. Some of those are shown only half because there is already 8-inch main, we're going to replace the smaller diameter main so that it will all be 8-inch, as well as the lead services. It is estimated at a cost of $1.8 million, and we also have grant funding for that, meaning that the city doesn't have to pay back any loans. The Eastern Outfall Phase 2 eliminates CSOs, which are combined sewer overflows. As Dan mentioned, in Phase 1, there, it's, these are the next two phases of the four-phase project. The Phase 2 is shown in green. I've also, for reference, shown Phase 4, which is shown in blue. And then Phase 3 is the Carlisle Pump Station located at the corner of Carlisle and John Daly. Once all four phases of this project are completed, they will eliminate these overflows, which allow sewer sewage mixed with storm water to overflow during really high-intensity rains. And once those overflows, they go right to the creek, to the lower branch of the Rouge River. So once this is completed, that will no longer occur. The city was able to obtain grant funding for this at a cost of $6.3 million for Phase 2, and as you can see, most of Phase 2 is located in Princess Avenue. The next project that we want to talk about is a pressure-reducing valve for the master meter. Now, I think most of you know, the city has three master meters that are connected to the Great Lakes Water Authority, and that's where the water supply comes from, and the city has already been able to install pressure-reducing valves at two of the three locations. This would be the last of those three locations. This master meter is located at Michigan Avenue and Inkster Road. Once it's installed, it will help to protect the city's water system from pressure surges in the Great Lakes Water Authority system, which sometimes result in water main breaks. The city has already experienced a less, a lower number of water main breaks with the pressure-reducing valves that have already been installed in the other two locations. So this is estimated a cost of $500,000, and it will be funded with water and sewer fees. We also have applied, oh, no, this is funding that the city has already received. So this, these are water main replacements that either have, well, all of them have substandard-sized mains, and in addition to that, they have a high concentration of lead services, and that's why they were selected for an application. The city received grant money for it. It's estimated at a cost of $10.9 million or almost $11 million. I've listed all the roads that they're located in, and it's also currently in design and expected to bid sometime next spring. So this is another map of the same area. This would be funding for that blue, those roadways where pipeline's going to go for, shaded in blue, and also the pump station located at John Daly and Carlisle. The city received a combination of funding, $20 million in grant and $2.175 million in loan to complete this project. And again, once this project is completed, all of the combined sewer overflows will be eliminated, and we would no longer be discharging to the creek. So the next step after we eliminate all these sewer overflows is to take a look at the storm water system as a whole. We're going to do that starting in January sometime, and take a look at how we're going to decombine our sewer systems and our storm systems that are now combined. We want to eliminate sending that storm water to a treatment plant because it is more expensive to treat storm water. We want to send the storm water right to the creek. So we would also identify other issues if they came up, and then we want to take a look at areas that sometimes flood during really high-intensity rains and see what we can do to eliminate that as well. We estimate that study to be about $250,000. It would be paid with water and sewer funds, but we, if we were successful in getting state revolving funds, the city would be reimbursed for that study. So some of the projects that we are in the process of applying for, and we'll probably come back to you as a group to present you with, are the Drinking Water State Revolving Funds. We've identified these areas shown in blue that have substandard water mains, also lead services, and we know near that intersection of Beach Daly and Michigan Avenue, there were fire flow issues with a fire there in the Heatherwood Apartments, and we want to address that issue as well. We're estimating that that cost is $20 million for the pipelines shown here. When we prepare a plan and apply for state revolving funds, we apply for five years over a period of time, so we're estimating that the first year would be about $20 million in costs, and each year after that would be about $15 million. So now I want to mention that when we apply for state revolving funds, they're usually loans, but as I mentioned earlier, some of those loans turned into grants because there was grant money available. We don't know how long, how much longer that's going to last. Most of those were American Rescue Plan Act grants, or ARPA grants, you may have heard those referred to as. We don't know how, I was told that there probably going to be another year of that by the people at Eagle, so we want to apply for that as soon as we can before it's gone. We're also looking at future roadway projects. So Cherry Hill from Inkster to Beach Daly, we've teamed with Dearborn Heights. They're going to do the north part of the half of the road, we're going to fund the south part of the road. We have obtained some funding for that through the county. There are matching funds, and we will have to, you know, the city will have to pay for design fees and also construction inspection fees in addition to the matching funds. So the other projects that we've identified is Harrison Road. Everyone knows that Harrison Road is not in great shape. We haven't been able to locate a source for funding for that, but we're still looking. And then, as Dan mentioned, Avondale Phase 1 was scheduled to be reconstructed, well, was reconstructed. Avondale Phase 2 and 3 were also planned to be reconstructed immediately after that, but because of the high inflation rates, we had to delay those projects because their only funding source were gas main, or gas tax funds, and we need to let those accrue before we can tackle those two. There is a side, another sidewalk replacement program we're referring to as Phase 3. It's located, it's going to be in an area in the south, so it's going to be in an area bounded by Annapolis and Carlisle and Harrison and Inkster. We've applied to SEMCOG for Transportation Alternative Program Funds. We've been successful one time for the other project that Dan mentioned, so we're hoping to be successful again, but again, this is another project where the city needs to foot the bill for design and matching funds for construction, and then they need to pay all the funds for inspection. So I don't know if anyone's been following MDOT's updates, but they were planning to reconstruct Michigan Avenue, and that was planned in 2025, now it's been rescheduled to 2026, and that was from city limit to city limit. There is a chance that that might be delayed, and I know that other portions of Michigan Avenue have been canceled, like the reconstruction of Michigan Avenue, because MDOT's experiencing those high inflation rates, just like everyone else. So I do want to mention that the other funding we're considering or looking into includes, you know, providing information to lobbyists so that they can maybe get some discretionary funds, and then also possibly a roadway bonding program where that would go out to vote, which would generate some funds as well. So stay tuned on that. So here's a summary of all the areas that are, it's kind of summarized based on what has been completed or is almost done, what's under design or is already funded, and then what is planned, may be funded, or we're still seeking funds that would be out farther in the future. So we're pretty much, you know, covering most of the city. This doesn't include, you know, things that cover all of the city, like the lead services or the speed bumps, those are kind of scattered, or the fire hydrants and valves, those are kind of scattered out through the whole city. So we do want to also mention the city's success at obtaining loans and grants. So over the last five years, the city's been able to obtain $69 million in loans and grants. Of that $69 million, about $15.5 million of it is our loans, and the rest of it are grants. But keep in mind that especially for roadway projects and the sidewalk projects, it's matching funds. So it's like the water and sewer where we get funds to pay for design, construction, and inspection. Typically, with roadway and sidewalk projects, you only, you have to pay for a matching portion, 20% to 25% roughly, and then you have to pay for design and also inspection. Planned additional loans and grants, I'm just going to mention the program name, but we have several applications in for the FDCVT, which is the Financially Distressed Cities, Villages, and Townships. We're working with the Finance Director to try to put together applications for that. We are also, as I mentioned- We are also, as I mentioned, putting together a project plan for additional drinking water state revolving funds for water main replacements. That would extend over a five-year period. I already mentioned that we would look for sidewalk grants through the Transportation Alternative Program. We were successful once. We're hoping to be successful again. And then, once we get that stormwater master plan together, we'd plan to apply for clean water state revolving funds. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Maya to answer any questions you might have.
Excuse me, before y'all ask any questions, one thing Carrie forgot to tell y'all. We did, one thing Carrie forgot to mention to you guys, is we did submit a letter proposal to our lobbyists up in Lansing for road work, and it was $98 million. So, we just wait. We submitted it, what, August? Somewhere in August. So, we just waiting to hear back. Yeah, we did submit some road projects to our lobbyists in Lansing, and we requested $98 million for the city of Inkster. Harrison and those roads were included in that request. So, we just waiting to hear back from them.
Thank you. So, I know there was a lot of information to obtain and take in. So, if you have any questions, we'll take questions now, or we have our contact information that's on the board, our office. My office hours are from 7:00 AM to 3:30. I'm always available, phone or email. And so, I'll open up the floor now if you guys do have questions.
I'm necessarily have a question, just a statement. I want to thank you for this packet and the presentation, because it provided clarity for a lot of the residents who've been asking us all throughout the summer about why is Avondale being blacktopped at this portion, or why is this being done, and why is that being done, or when is this going to be done? And as it was, we were able to explain to them how the cost increased, but this provided much more detail, where, of course, they'll see their tax dollars at work, plus other things that you all are doing. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, okay. One question. Thank you for the grants. But, I do, I am concerned about the revolving loan, fund loans. Who pays those? How are those paid? Are they on our taxes, or what?
Those will be repaid out of your water and sewer fees. So, the Finance Department takes a look at the rates each year, and those are factored into your rates. And so, the, the advice that we were given is that if you're, you need to maintain your system, and it costs money, and the best way to do that is on a long-term loan at a low interest rate, so that your rates to your users or your customers are only raised in small increments instead of large increments when there is an emergency that you have to address.
So, it'd be on the water bills?
Yes.
Well, thank you. I thank you. And then, Mayor and Council, I do provide you guys with a quarterly report every three months on the projects. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our second presentation, the Juski Homes Tax Incentive Opportunities for Annapolis Point Development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City Council, Mayor Nolan, and the citizens of the city of Inkster.
Okay, you got me.
Got it. Okay. So, I stand before you today in partnership with Pastor John Hearn Jr. on behalf of Western Wayne County Urban Community Development in regards to Annapolis Point Development Project. And I'm, wanted to present to you today information about tax incentives for the development project, and to kind of give you an overview of the explanation as to what our request entails. And overall, what we're asking for is the tax abatement through the construction phase of the development, and then also to have that property identified as a neighborhood enterprise zone. So, what are, why are tax incentives necessary? So, for the city of Inkster, our millage rate is significantly high. And you can see in comparison to other cities, Inkster is 71, Westland is 46, Romulus 53, and Dearborn Heights is 48. And what that means is it creates a higher cost for building new construction homes. By adding tax incentives, we can pass those savings on to the homebuyers. We make our tax base more comparable to the surrounding cities, which entails, makes the houses more affordable for our Inkster residents. Inkster is identified as a qualified local governing unit per the State Tax Commission, and tax incentives will actually also make it more consistent with the master plan that was completed a few years ago, economic development outline for the city. So, what is the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone? It's actually an act that was set up some years ago, back in 1992. And it actually provides an incentive for development and rehabilitation of residential homes located in eligible distressed communities. The process is, you complete the application, it's submitted for review and approval. The approval is provided, is required by the City Council as well as the mayor. And then, that information is submitted to the state level, and then reviewed by the State Tax Commission, and they're responsible for the final approval and the issuance of the new construction home certificates. The NEZ certification is issued for a term of six to 15 years, with the exception of the last three years. The last three years of the certification, they do a phase-out process in order, because at that point, it will go back to the original tax rate. For the NEZ certificate, what it will do is give you a 50% tax break on new construction homes for that time period stated, like I said, between six to 15 years. Now, why is that important? If you look at this model here, this is actually one of the houses that we're looking to build for Annapolis Point. It's a 1,400-square-foot ranch model, three bedrooms, two bath, formal dining room area, two car attached garage and a basement. This is actually a comparable home that's located less than a mile away. Actually, it's about four blocks south of the Annapolis Point Development Project, located in the city of Westland. This is actually one of the houses that we're planning to build, one of the models. So, when you look at that house compared to the ones that we're looking to build, here are the numbers. If you get a qualified buyer, roughly 6% interest with today's financing rates, these are how, this is how the numbers fall out. And you see, the biggest variance is the property tax, and it is because of the millage. So, a homeowner buying a house in Westland, the one that I showed previously, would have a monthly payment of about $1,894. That same house built three blocks north in Annapolis Point would be significantly higher, coming at a $2,304. That's a difference of about $400 a month. So, the biggest challenge with that is finding a homeowner who would be willing to pay significantly more for the same house when they can just go a few blocks away and pay a cheaper price. So, to fix those types of scenarios, that's what the NEZ has provided. It, again, provides an incentive for developments to balance out the differences for new construction, to promote housing in cities such as Inkster. Overall, even with the NEZ, we're looking to build 72 properties, which will yield us an average annual tax revenue that we currently are not receiving at this time of about $224,000. And that's about average, being with the house price point of about $250,000. So, there's still a significant incentive to do the NEZ. It's still going to create, generate significant revenue for the city, and still be comparable to the cities around us, Westland, Dearborn Heights, Romulus, those cities as well. So, the next step is to request approval from the City Council, again, and the mayor. And we'll process the application, working with the planning developer, and submit the resolutions required to the State Tax Commission in order to get the tax incentive needed for the new construction development.
Are there any questions?
I just had a question, I guess, to administration. So, does this need to go through a process of some type of designation for the NEZ zone, some type of ordinance versus reading, or how do we establish that particular parcel of land as dedicated to?
It's done through the application process. We put, there's a number of components that are required to go with that application process, but it first starts with, with the City Council providing approval for us to even submit that application. Once we submit that application, provide the resolution, then it goes to the next level at the state, and they review it at that level. I don't think that they, they look at it to see if it's in alignment with what the certification is set out to do. And I think we're in complete compliance with regards to what their requirements are.
Okay. And how many years would this be? Would this be for the 15 years total for the tax abatement part of?
I would suggest it's 15 years, only because there's such a significant variance in our millage rate. And what that'll do is, it'll, it'll provide time for us to build the new construction homes, for the values in the city to adjust, and kind of stabilize over that time period.
And then, after the 15 years?
It reverts back unless you reapply for it again.
Okay. Thank you.
So, my understanding was, like, reading a little bit about, like, the nice opportunity that it takes half of the mills of, like, the surrounding neighborhoods. It's not, like, half of, like, Inkster's mills. Is that correct?
No, it's half of Inkster's mill.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And then, I know you mentioned, like, that three-year phase-out process, but as you also mentioned, like, our mills are kind of high, right? Like, it's not a secret. So, what are we doing, or what are you doing to kind of help our citizens kind of, like, adjust to that significant height? Because ultimately, like, it's kind of taking them into a whole new, like, price range, you know what I mean, for a mortgage? So, and then, it kind of comes back on the city, because now we have, I would say it's all 72, but a good amount of people may not be able to afford, let's say, their mortgage anymore, or, you know, and I'm just speaking as to where Inkster stands now. I don't know what it'll look like in 15 years, but.
Well, hopefully, things will balance out. It doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, it gets turned off in 15 years, and then automatically you're paying $9,000 a year in taxes. That's, that's not what we're hoping to do. Over time, you know, as, as different programs evolved, and, you know, different elections with regards to millage, hopefully, it'll balance out. But, I can tell you right now, with the current, currently the way the millage stands, that that tax number would be $9,000 a month. And that would deter anyone from coming into the city to purchase a home.
You mean a year, right?
Yes, yes, sorry, $9,000 a year.
Okay. It kind of, because it kind of speaks to my point of, like, like you said, like, that's, that's kind of high, but then, when they first purchase the property, that's not what they'd be getting, you know?
Right. So, when they first purchase a property as a NEZ, as a NEZ property, they would get the rates comparable to the surrounding cities, and they would get the lower tax breaks if we do pass this. If we don't pass it, then they would be subject to the higher rates. And as you said, it would minimize the people who would be able to qualify for that added expense for their debt-to-income ratio to be approved.
And then, how long do you think this project is going to take?
We're estimating about four, four years to complete the entire project.
And then, last, have you done any projects similar to this in any other communities, where we can, like, before making the vote, kind of look and see how they did it, and then how they phase their residents out as well, or?
I, I haven't done, well, that's 15-year project. But, actually, the Westshire project was under this, a similar NEZ classification over 20 years ago. So, I could probably pull some research from there. There's also a new development project in the city of Ypsilanti. It's actually 45 single-family homes as well. It's very comparable to this one. So, I'd be happy to provide you some information on there, too. They are in the phase, they are in the similar phase of the development. So, to give you a comparison of where we are now compared to, you know, Westshire, I can give you a view on both sides.
Because that'd be great. Just because, like, I know 15 years is kind of, like, kind of a long time. And then, also, I don't want, I want to be able to give proper information to, like, my other residents that don't have the tax abatement, you know what I mean, to kind of talk about that a little bit more. Because to say, like, oh, this group alone gets this special rate for 15 years, and then there's people in the community that's been living here for generations, you know what I mean? So, just to kind of be able to see what other communities.
It's very popular. Like I said, they created this certification specifically for this scenario. It's to help underserved communities be able to provide new construction, development, rehabilitation for bladed properties, and not have the burden of a huge tax liability. To encourage people to come into the city, to be able to afford the houses, they had to do something to level out the playing fields. So, but I definitely understand what you're saying. It's very popular, so there's a lot of information that I can provide.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Okay, as far as the tax abatement, they would be paying less taxes than our other residents, correct?
No.
They won't. So, what, so, explain that to me.
So, they would be paying 50% of the taxes. So, for example, in the illustration that was provided, let me go back to that slide. This is probably a better one. So, you're looking at, like, a $250,000 house as the example that I used. They would be paying about $4,500 a month, I mean, a year. Sorry, I keep missing that up, right? A year. But, even at $4,500 a year, it's still higher than Westland, than Romulus, than the surrounding cities. It just gets us closer to leveling the playing fields, because Inkster's values are considerably lower compared to some of the other ones. So, when the millage rate is that high, that's what happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't understand what she's talking about. Completely, I, I'm, you're talking about this? Yeah, I would have to look into this. I'm not a real estate person, but I know I don't want any higher taxes or anything else that I have to pay.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't affect any of the other tax-paying citizens. It's only specifically for this development. And what it does is, it makes us competitive with the surrounding cities. So, like I said, if we go back to the example for Westland, these are the same houses, right? So, in Westland, a $250,000 house is going to cost you just under $1,900 a month, okay? That same house, just three blocks over, is going to cost you $2,300 a month.
I understand that, Paul.
Yeah, so that's.
Because you're in Inkster. But, I'm just saying, because Westland has a higher property value than we do.
Right. And that's the reason why we have the higher millage.
Our mills is hyped up because our values used to be.
I understand that. I understand. I would, I just need time to look at this.
So, as, as we continue to build in the city, renovate houses, values will go up, and hopefully, the millage will come down to, to offset that, to balance it.
I mean, I guess we got to look at it from this standpoint. It's hard, okay, it's hard to get, to have new development, because our mills are so high.
Yes.
Assuming our property values keep going up as we improve our city and build more, then we'll be able to lower the mill rate. That's the goal.
That's the goal.
And property value has been going up.
It's been going up.
It's been going up.
About, about this is, you know what I'm saying, it's been going up every year.
I just want to clarify one thing that you said. You said that our, if we did this, our mills would still be higher than the ones surround us, surrounding us, right? But, then, if Inkster's currently at 71, it's 50%, right, of the mill. So, it'd be like about 35.5, right, still being as below it? I just want to make sure from my notes.
Yes. So, and then, it would equate to about $4,500 a year.
Instead of $9,000.
Instead of $9,000. Instead of $9,000.
Do I have anything else? Now typically, we take comments from the crowd during orientation. Unfortunately, this presentation was not presented during orientation. So, what's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Bradford has a comment, would you like to hear? Okay, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor, I have my question.
Come to the podium.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for having my question, I appreciate it. As an incentive, homeowners that are mature and their mortgages. In 15 years, is it going to be also able, are the, the residents of this program going to be able to come in in March? And ask for any tax reduction within the 15 years? Is that an incentive that will be enjoyed by the homeowners that buy into the housing project?
I don't understand your question.
Okay, so in March, there's a tax tribunal?
Sure, every year.
Will these residents that buy their homes be able, with the inflation or whatever is going on in the market? Will they be able to come to the city and ask for a reduction in their taxes in that period of time, 15 years?
What he's asking is, every year, if you, there's a dispute as to the value of your property, you can come in and dispute. If we set an SEV at $50,000 and you think it should be 35, you can come in and bring evidence, market statements, other analysis, and try to get it lowered. In this case, these are brand-new houses, so the values are going to be pretty high.
Right, the value's going to be based on the construction costs.
Yeah.
So that's the best met, a method to determine the value. So it would be unlikely that it would get an adjustment down any further than that.
Right, it would be.
You can't justify that, because there has been enough history to substantiate reducing the values. We don't want to reduce the values, we want the values to go up.
Any other questions, anybody? All right, well, thank you, appreciate the presentation, and we'll look forward to getting that additional information from you. Okay, consent agenda. They're properly moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Boards and commissions. Okay. Item A, appointment of an election commissioner to serve a one-year term vacated by Felicia Rutledge, expiring in 2025. Anybody express interest for that?
Mr. Bradford.
The Bradford.
Mr. Bradford.
Okay.
I'm not, well, I, I nominate, nominate.
Okay.
Okay, I nominate Brad, Juan Bradford.
Okay.
Support.
And properly nominated and supported, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Item B, appointment of planning commissioners to fill vacated or expired terms. Okay. How, who, what appointments? I know the mayor has some appointments, do I have them all?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, I have a list. We have Tanya Williams, who's currently serving, who would like to be reappointed. So I nominate Tanya Williams to be reappointed to the planning commission. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, Tanya's on, passes. All right. Okay, I would like to nominate Stephen Chisholm to be, to continue to serve on the planning commission.
I second.
Somebody move that, because I'm nominated, I can't move.
I move it.
Move, and you second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Okay. I would like to nominate Darryl Davis to continue to sit on the planning commission. Do you have a motion? Okay.
Second.
They're properly moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. I'd like to nominate Norman McDaniel to, to sit on the planning commission.
So moved.
Support.
They're properly moved and supported, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. So how many does that give us? That gives, oh, I'm sorry, I'm missing somebody. I would like to nominate Ashley Williams, who's expressed interest and has turned in an application to sit on the planning commission. Is it properly moved?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. So we got one more spot? So essentially, we have one more opening on the planning com, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about. I'd like to nominate Matt Willis to continue to sit on the planning commission.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. It passes. So I think we got nine?
Yes, we got a total of nine.
Great. All right. Now remember, we need other volunteers to sit on the other boards and commissions. So please, if you're interested, fill out an application if you don't, have not already done so. We need a lot of volunteers to get active in our boards and commissions, which will be active during this term. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair?
Mm-hmm.
So the ones that's expiring for next year, in March, can, I need to reach out to?
See if they want to continue to serve.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Everybody look at their appointments, and if they, you have appointments and someone's sitting there from your district, reach out to them, see if they want to continue to serve. Or you can nominate whoever you like, but, yeah. Do you have one? Okay.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
I would like to nominate Tim Williams to continue serving on the aging commission.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. They're properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Uh, commission on aging. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes.
Okay, Mr. Chair. What we going to do about the Tifa?
Yeah, Tifa, DDA, um.
I know MML gives us books. And some of the members that's on those boards up north, they grant writers. They, they getting down upstairs. So, is it possible, maybe, if we had the money, the people we put on there, have them go learn how to write grants? Because most of our funding comes that, that way, and we don't have that. So, I'm not sure, or how much it costs to, if they want to pay on the outside to go. But there should be maybe consideration before we put them on this board. Because we keep putting people on the boards, it just can't do anything for us. I mean, it's not to say that they won't if they don't have to, but you, you follow what I'm saying?
Well, this board is different, because it involves raising money.
Right, right. So we need people on those boards that are grant writers.
Or.
Or we're going to put Jerome over there, because him and Carrie and all of them, they, they getting down.
I'm not sure it's Jerome writing these grants.
Oh, he's, oh, he's helping, he's helping. But, but we need, we need people like that. So we need to find, figure out a way, find out how much it costs from MML. If there's something in our budget, or if it's something that they can do. Because you want to be able to be on these boards that can help bring our money in. Because we have not gotten money from these boards in quite some time.
They've been dormant.
Yes, and we need them active.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so everybody think about that. I'm sorry, Ms. F. Aren't we not supposed to do this? Okay, because we, there is funding there we can get.
Okay, okay.
That's good information, actually. Even though we're both out of order, me for letting her speak and for her speaking.
Mr. Chair, I was going to say, we need to take a look at the ZBA as well. Because I know, talking in the past to Commissioner McDaniel, it was only like three active people, and we were trying to firm up. And I know every once in a while, we have a variance that comes from an applicant. And the ZBA and the planning commission has to vote on it. And with the way it stands right now, we need to dive into that sooner than later, so.
In a lot of, in other communities, a lot of people who sit on the planning commission also sit on the ZBA also, because it's kind of related. So how many we have valid, like three?
Maybe two or three.
Okay.
If, if, you know, this stands, if this completely, you know, completely up today.
Yeah, we need to get those appointed soon, because if a variance comes up, we don't want to be trying to appoint it after the fact. Just so we can have a meeting, because we need a quorum. So if anybody's interested in sitting on the zoning board of appeals, Tifa, DDA, please, please go to clerk's office and fill out the application. It's very short, it's, it's real short. Okay. All right, any other nominations? All right, no previous business, ordinance, nothing, so we move on to new business.
Item 9A is to consider authorizing the administration to implement a newly-elected city council onboarding process.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, discussion. I have a question. Is it going to be a committee, or is council going to work on it as a body, to make sure everything is in there that they want in there?
As a body.
As a body? Okay, so, we're basically agreeing to do it tonight, but we're not actually creating the document or the policy tonight.
Well, this is just a start.
Just a start.
Because they had additional items that they wanted to add as well.
I couldn't hear it.
The new member orientation class, I think someone wanted to add that to the pilot, to this. So there's, this is a working document, it's going to be some additions to this. I just wanted to get something basically in place, because you have the potential of every four years, a newly-elected official's coming in. It's imperative that we get integrated into the organization in a streamlined way. So we can get about the business of doing our business for our residents.
Explain to everybody what that is.
So, what that is, is that, you know, there's things that have to happen for council members. They have to get keys, they have to get mailbox keys, pass codes to the building, laptops. They also have to get a copy of the budget, because we're fiduciaries of the city, so we need to have a copy of that, the charter, so we know how we're governing. So all, you know, just items like that, making sure that we have a package that's, that is together, and that we're all receiving and getting the same information. Hopefully, at the same time, during kind of like a little mini orientation process.
Any good?
You're just testing me. All right, so, the vote is basically to, to create this policy, we're not creating it tonight, so. All right, any other discussion on? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Item B is to consider approving the attached deficit elimination plan to be filed with the state of Michigan. Detailing financial projections through fiscal year 2025 for the general fund.
Second.
They're properly moved and seconded, discussion.
We normally would get that letter with this. Did you, did you email us the letter that you sent out to the state? Because we normally get that as well as this.
Talking about the letter from the state?
Oh, is it the same letter that, from years ago? It's just different figures?
We're just updating the plan.
Okay, okay. Okay, so maybe give the new members the letter, because they wouldn't have that.
Yeah, I will. And then, that also includes the MIDC fund as well, where we actually get money to help for indigent people that can't afford to pay for their own attorney. And so without the general fund being intact, it caused the MIDC fund to not be intact as well. So both of those are going to have to be deficit elimination plans.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes.
Item C is to consider approving the attached budget amendments for the general fund, specifically building, maintenance, and equipment accounts with respect to DPS. DPS projects.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes.
Okay, item D is to consider authorizing the administration to continue the temporary easement agreement between Consumers Energy Company, a Michigan corporation, and the City of Inkster effective January 1, 2024, and shall run through December 31, 2026. The City of Inkster grants to consumers the option to extend this agreement for two additional one-year periods, which the extended period shall commence upon the expiration of the primary period, or any exercise extended period, as the case may be, by giving the City of Inkster written notice prior to the end of the term.
So moved.
Okay, can we do a friendly amendment and, and make sure we all understand this is a three-year deal? Possibly a three-year deal, one year with two one-year options.
So, what they're asking for, to the body and to the audience, and to the viewing audience. What they're actually asking for is a three-year deal. It begin in January 1 of 2024, but that's just through December 31 of 2024. And then the two additional years will kick in upon y'all's approval. But they also put it in language prior, after that, that if they want to come back for an additional year and a year after that, well, we blessed that, and as I explained to the mayor, we don't have to say yes, but it would be part of this agreement. They have that option to come back, but the mayor doesn't have to say yes. Like, if we get ready to sell the property, we wouldn't have to enter it. So the three years is what they're asking for, but part two of that, if case, after the third year, we haven't done anything with it, you say, okay, let's do the, another year. The mayor have authority or written agreement from them to sign it. So that would give them a fourth year, and then if the fifth year rolls up and it's the same instance, that would give the mayor authority to sign for the fifth year. We don't have to, the agreement is fine and intact as it is, because those last two years are at the discretion of the mayor.
Would y'all feel more comfortable with me at the discretion of the council? So we do the three-year deal, and then if we want to extend it, we come back to council, instead of giving me all that say-so.
One more time, because the way it was explained, at six, was that you can sign off like every year following. You're saying once we get that three-year deal, then it comes back to council?
I think it should come back.
After that three-year? Okay, so we don't, we don't approve it as council every year, they choose to renew it.
The first three years is theirs. That makes sense?
Yeah. And, go ahead.
For clarification, that, that 98 sum is per year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you accept the friendly amendments based on explanations? Okay, and we already had a second, okay. Okay, any, any more discussion?
She's, she's looking like no second, and so I thought I seconded. I'm talking to, to the clerk, I seconded.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Okay, item E is to consider approving the 2024 city council meeting calendar dates, as specified in the Inkster City Charter, Section 7.1. To be on the first and third Mondays of each month, and councils' chambers located at 26215. Tropia Bridge, Inkster, Michigan are hereby established in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.261, that's, whereas, these meetings are conducted and open to the public.
So moved.
They're properly moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes.
Item F is to consider approval of an offer to purchase one vacant parcel located on the north side of Hazelwood, between Middle Belt Road and Central. In the amount of $1,500 to Maria Sanwana Delgado Ramirez and Juan Ricardo Alonso Delgado.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes.
The next item is to consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel located on the north side of Penn Street, between Bayhand Street and Melo Dale Street, for $1,500.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second.
They're properly moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Passers?
Item H is to consider approval to purchase three vacant parcels. The parcels located on Area Street, on the west side of the street, between Carlisle and Beach Streets, for four thousand dollars.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, it's been moved. Second, any discussion?
Can we have, if they're here, have someone come up and speak as to what they wanted to use the property for?
Yeah, Stephanie's here. Come on, Stephanie.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
Congratulations to everyone. Everyone's wonderful and community. There's three parcels a young lady want to purchase across the street from her mom's house. She's going to get a state manufacturer home put, put there, so she needed three lots. In the city of Inchester, certain areas you need to have a certain size lots. So in order for her to meet that requirement, she purchased two lots that was over thirty-five feet wide. And then, so they was fifteen hundred apiece, and then it was one that was thirty, less than thirty-five feet, so that's a thousand. Considered non-buildable, but all three of them together, she'll be able to build her home. So that's why it came up to four thousand, and they right next door to each other.
That's good news. Any more questions?
Thank you, guys. Bye-bye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The passes. All right. Okay. Do we need to state this for informational purposes? So we got public participation. Okay, we have public participation. If you would like to say something, please fill out a form. We're going to start with the Melvin Gatewood.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I represent an organization called God's Work Our Hands. We were here before the council and the last council. We are trying to purchase a piece of property at twenty-four oh seven John Daly. It's actually located right there at the corner of John Daly and Trow Bridge. And we put in a proposal to purchase that property for seven thousand dollars. We are nonprofit. The building itself has about twenty thousand dollars worth of repairs that are needed, necessary for us to actually utilize the building, which we will incur on our own. So we're asking the city, the council to approve our purchase.
Okay, Mr. Dowdell, did you, I know this came up before because we discussed it. Do we have a, have we went through the proper process as far as the offer and purchase? Okay, we, unfortunately, we had some employees leave. Who were you dealing with, with respect to this?
Let me say again.
Who at the city were you talking to regarding purchasing this property? Oh, okay, come on up, Peggy.
So I did write the offer. They are offering seven thousand.
Seventy-five?
Seven thousand dollars for the building and the lot. Our city assessor assessed the building at seventy-five thousand for the building. The lot wasn't included. We didn't get that, but yes.
Yeah, I know, there's two separate parcels, the parking lot and the building.
That's correct.
So the assessor had it at about seventy-five thousand for the building? And what are you going to, sir, what are you going to do? What would you like to do with the building?
We are a nonprofit, if I, if I may.
Sure, come on.
We've, we've had, we've been in the city now for about ten years. And we were located on Inchester Road, right across from the old Stardust. And then we were also in the Invictus Building.
Okay.
And what we do is we are, we, we give away everything. We give away clothes, food, housing appliances and so forth. Everything is free. We don't charge for anything, and everything is donated to us. And whatever is donated to us, we pass on to the public or anyone that needs it.
That's good. I appreciate you doing that.
We've been doing that, like I say, for several years now. At this time, we're actually being forced to work out of a parking lot because we have no place.
Peggy, can you present that to us so we can put on an agenda? Because it wasn't on our agenda for this meeting.
Yes.
But I'm glad he brought your attention. And then we'll, we'll actually discuss it at the next meeting, probably.
Okay, I'll make sure you get it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gateway.
Thank you.
Marilyn Johnson.
Mayor, I want a councilman. Because of the presentation from Maya, he explained my problem.
Okay.
With that generator right outside my house and stuff.
I know exactly what you're talking about. Thank you, Maya. Okay, Alyssa Anderson.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Alicia Anderson. I'm the administrative assistant over at DPS. I just wanted to get up here really quick and touch base on our new system that we have called Code Red. It's basically an emergency notification system that we're using to communicate with the residents, different things that's going on within the city. So if we have water main breaks, road closures, community events going on, we will use this system to let the residents know. I do have a packet over here. It basically explains a little more about what Code Red is, and then gives two ways for the residents to sign up. And then we also have a form that residents can fill out. If they aren't tech savvy or they need help, they can fill that out and bring it over to DPS. And me or Mrs. Triplet will sign them up. And then we also have another paper over there with our address and our contact information. So if they have any questions or they need help signing up for the alerts, they can call us or stop by the office.
Is anybody here not signed up for Code Red yet? See some hands? Maybe you want to just hand them the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Barbara Cooper. Is this a two-timer, tag team thing? Okay, Gabe Henderson.
We're right together. Good evening, mayor and council. Losing my voice. Two things. I'd like to thank all those that came out this past Friday and Saturday to help with the Goodfellow Papers. I talked with the chief today, and we're going to try to do this again this Friday and this Saturday. So I need. DPS, please. I'm going to check with Chief Hubbard to see if the fire department will come out again because they were out there Friday in the rain. And Gabe does have papers, and we do have the job for anyone who would like to make a donation to the Goodfellows. No child without a Christmas. And we're trying to get as much as we can. Our distribution date will be next Friday here. And great paper. I'd like to thank everyone in the community, all those that put ads in our paper, all those patrons, everything. We appreciate everything that everyone has done. And we just need a little extra, just a little bit more so we can make sure that all of our children have a blessed Christmas this year. And so hopefully, the weather is supposed to be in the fifties this Friday and Saturday, so we have good weather. And we want everyone to come out and support the Goodfellows. We have new signs this year, so when you're out there, it says, Inchester Goodfellows. Paper drive today. So everybody knows that this is our paper, paper drive. And we want everyone, thank you, Gabe, to do that. To come out and support us. Rain, shine, snow, or sleet, the Goodfellows will be out there doing our papers, all right? Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, that's all we have for public participation. Madam Clerk?
Okay, what I have is I'd like to give a recount notice. We will be experiencing a recount with the Wayne County Board of Canvassers on Thursday, November seventh, at nine AM. And it will be to recount District Two votes. So it'll be held here at City Hall in the council chamber. And that's all I have.
That's it? Okay, thank you.
The Board of County Canvassers are going to be conducting a recount here at the City of Inchester on Thursday, November seventh, and.
December.
Oh, I'm sorry. November is embedded. December seventh, twenty twenty-three, here in the council chambers at nine AM is to recount District Two for the city council seat. And you're welcome to attend. At nine AM.
And they'll go till they finish counting, so it may be a little while.
And that's all.
Under state law, you have a right as a candidate to ask for a recount in certain situations. So that's what happened this time. So they met all the requirements for the recount, so the recount will take place this Thursday. All right, Mr. Treasurer?
Yes, we just have some drawdowns that we're making right now, so some reimbursements that we're going after right now. And then we have some new grants that we're trying to apply for. So just working hard at trying to get more revenues into the city.
All right, thank you. All right, mayor and council communication. Since I discriminated against some folks last time.
Yeah, you did.
I'm going to start on the other hand.
Discrimination.
You're right. Okay, you're good. You're good. You're good, okay. Felicia?
I would just like to say, like my former predecessor, Tim Williams, make sure you all shop Inchester, please.
Still hearing that in my nightmares. Okay, Mr. Mayor Proton, oh, no, no, you go second.
I just want to say thank you, DPS. You guys are doing a great job. And I've always said in my comments that any department in the city hall, you never have to worry about that department over there because they be on top. So thank you again. Also, too, I would like to get with you, mayor, to the school that I've been trying to get tore down for the last eight years. Yes, we need to see if we can get some kind of grants from, talk to David Kinesik, you know, see if we can get something to get that torn down.
It's dangerous.
Yeah, it is. Okay, and also, too, that I've been noticing, I'm not sure if we have anything in our ordinance, but the leaves has fallen, and you ride down the street and it's all in the street, all on the curb. So when there's leaves on the curb, guess what? When it rains, it's not going to drain. So do we have any ordinance to maybe enforce homeowners to make sure their, their property is clean from, from leaves that's on the curb, that's on, that's in the street?
Yeah, the problem is they blow them into the street, you know?
Right, but they're not supposed to do that.
Not supposed to, of course not.
Because I know we do have, I'm not sure when the street sweepers is coming out. I don't know.
They're out.
They were out, okay. But I've been noticing that a lot.
Well, did you guys see that nice, pretty vacuum, leaf vacuum truck that Dearborn has? I'm sure Jerome Bev is going to get us one of those trucks. And we don't have to worry about any of that. They just ride down the street and vacuum all the leaves up. No drains, clog, nothing.
Maybe we might can get a grant for that. Jerome, what on earth is that? Okay, okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
And we need a loan, too, Jerome.
He's got all the money.
Right, he got all the money over there.
That's woman Richardson.
Just to support the Inchester Goodfellows, please, no child without a Christmas. No child without a Christmas. We need your help very bad. And I did see in the lobby where they had a, a box for toys, there was nothing in it. Come on, we need to help and support our children. So if you would please support with the toys and also the newspaper. And I, I'm in here with my family, and I'll be glad to sign autographs. But really, I'm serious. Please support the Inchester Goodfellows and make a donation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Proton?
Yes, thank you. I just want to echo the sentiments of Councilman Richardson. I know a lot of times it might not necessarily be the financial portion that we have to offer, but the manpower is needed as well. I usually try to dedicate myself a day if I can make it out there and stand in traffic and solicit passers, drivers that pass by so we can help increase the funds and just increase the notoriety of the Inchester Goodfellows in Inchester. Because when you go to the other communities, you see tens of however many of them out there, with all their departments, of course. Or I should say tens of thousands, I'm sorry. But a lot of people were in traffic and they rec, when they recognized and say like, oh, the Inchester Goodfellows is active? And this is happening? Like, yes, we are. And so, or, yes, they are. But I just wanted to implore you all with that's not always your money that you have to give, but your time is also an asset and manpower. And last but not least, I have a flyer here that you all should see soon. Says Mayor Byron Nolan and the Inchester City Council are inviting you to Christmas caroling at City Hall. Let there be light. This takes place on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, that is Wednesday, between the hours of six PM and seven PM, right out front, Inchester City Hall, two-six-two-one-five Trow Bridge. Light refreshments will be provided, and the phone number, if you have any additional questions or want to donate something, three-one-three-five-six-three-three-two-one-three, or if you want to participate in the caroling and say, hey, you want to do a solo or something like that. And that is.
December thirteenth.
December thirteenth, between six and seven PM. And if anybody thinks that they want to dress up like Santa Claus and bring some Christmas joy, feel free to do so.
I just want to thank Councilman and his mother for going out on Saturday. Thank you so much. They both at Middle Bell and Michigan Avenue. Was out on Inchester Road and Michigan Avenue dressed up like twins. And that's all I have.
So, yeah, okay, thank you. Just real quick, we have a few jobs that are posted on the city's website. So if you know anybody who's interested in applying to become HR Director, Parks and Rec Director, Special Projects and City Planner, please have them go to, or Assistant City Clerk. That position is open also. Please have them go to the website and to look at the job postings. We like to get as many applicants as possible so we have a good selection. Also, we're going to have a town hall, January fourth, two thousand twenty-four, six PM, at the rec center. Start off the new year with a town hall meeting, so we can, hopefully, you can ask us questions, give us your comments. Mayor and council, hopefully, will all be there if you're not working. And that's all in preparation for the state of the city, which will happen at the beginning of February. So, of course, we want to talk to the residents first before we lay out the plan because the residents have to be part of the plan, you know? It's going to be six o'clock on January fourth. And also, I wanted to just real quick, we have one more meeting before Christmas, but everybody's getting in the spirit. So I want to announce the city hall will be closing on December twenty-second at noon. And we will be reopening on January third, eight-thirty AM. So it will be shut down. Obviously, our emergency services will be working, DPS, police, fire. And, you know, you know who to call in case of emergency. But the city hall will be closed. You still pay your bills online. Guess you can't pay it with the kiosk because we'll be closed, just for those dates, like we do every year for Christmas. Anybody have any, I think that's it. I think that's all I have. Look forward to seeing everybody at the last meeting. It's usually festive. Maybe we'll have some cookies or something. Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm, I'm. I want to announce everybody, Mr. R- I wanna announce everybody, Mr. Ron Johnson passed away. He was a former city council person. His funeral was last Tuesday, which I did attend along with Sandra Wiley. And we presented him with a proclamation honoring him for his service. Uh, it was a very, it was, it was, as funerals go, it was a very good funeral. People walked out, were laughing and, and telling stories about Mr. Johnson. For those who knew him, you knew he was a character. And I really enjoyed, you know, him telling me what to do and things of that nature.
He told everybody what to do.
He told everybody, you know, everybody was his, his child, basically. And also Booker Snow, one of our former retired police officers, passed away. Um, his memorial service will be on December tenth at noon at Kelly Sweets and Studio on Mack Avenue in Gross Point, Michigan. You know, he was, he was a character also, a large character, Officer Snow. So we will miss both of those and, uh, gotta make sure to keep, keep their families in your prayers. Okay, all right. Do we have a motion going to close session?
Yes, we have one more issue, an employment issue.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Some move.
Okay. You got, you got a second, sir? Okay, we moved the second, um, discussion? And though you guys don't have to stay, we're gonna, we're gonna be over. All we do is come back and adjourn the meeting after we come back, so. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Four o'clock in the morning, come real fast.
Then we gotta adjourn the meeting.
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, okay. Do we have a motion based on what happened in the close session?
Some move.
Second, what are we moving, to accept?
To accept.
Accept, okay. Motion to accept, second?
Second.
All right, um, any discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
Just a motion to accept the resignation? Uh, it's been probably moved to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, it passes, one nay for the record. Um, we also need a motion to adjourn. There you go. Second, we probably moved second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We need to adjourn. You know what? We need to.